Appreciate the institutional role of the local legislature here at the county council and just really look forward to working with you all to lead our city in the right direction. Just a few kind of housekeeping items, as you probably recognized, we had Alder from the first provide an invocation today for tonight's meeting. Plan to do that, kind of rotate through council, you know, I might hop in from time to time and provide one myself, but thought that was kind of a nice way to do it and spread the wealth a little bit. So that's the plan. Also, I'm gonna, you know, set out to refer to Alders by their district number. If that gets too funky, you know, go back to last names and the like, but we're gonna give that a shot. There are also just a few items that I want to touch on here in the report that I plan to either address tonight or in the near future. So one that we'll be discussing near the foot of tonight's calendar is the Associated Bank parking lot, so just wanted to kind of check in with Alders on that. I think there has been some pretty clear directions sent on the part of council to the administration on that item, but because there's been a turnover with the executive here in a bit of a transition period, wanted to offer Alders that update, kind of a status update on where things stand there. Also, there has been a communication made to the Finance Committee that's meeting tomorrow with regard to the relationship that exists between the city of Green Bay and the Oneida Nation, you know, the status of an intergovernmental agreement or service agreement, want to, you know, sort of improve the climate and the relationship that exists between both entities, and so there is that item that will be before the Finance Committee tomorrow with the intent of bringing that forward to council on the 21st. And I think that's all I have for you all tonight. Again, just really excited to get started, been on the job, you know, three weeks, but of course, my first council meeting tonight. And hoping for a good one, so be gentle. Thanks a lot.
We're on to announcements.
Any announcements? Alder from the seventh.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few things. Going around what's going on downtown here, Her Story: History Comes Alive. That's this Thursday, couple days from now, May 9th, from 6:15 to 7:15. Don't miss Brown County Central Library series exploring US history from the female perspective. It will be presented in character, in period costume. This week you get to meet Susan B. Anthony, so head on over. Then, purveyor training runs every Saturday from now to May 11th, starting at 7:00 AM. You can, they meet up at Title Town Tap Room. They do different routes to keep you entertained, so you don't get too bored with your, wherever you're running. I'd be bored wherever we run after a block, but that's me. So if you're interested in training there, you can, purveyor is providing some training runs. And then, just last thing on a personal note, I have graduated from my radiation treatments, so hopefully fewer runs to the bathroom. And I just want to thank my Alders, the mayor, and staff for being patient with me, and all the support I've gotten, and all my constituents in the community, and my radiologists, Dr. Rodi and staff, they were just wonderful, couldn't have asked for better treatment. And as a memento of my graduation, they gave me a pin, which I'll now proudly wear, and thank you all.
Thanks, Alder.
Oh, you mean we got... Yeah, well, we'll see.
Alder from the ninth.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things to maybe celebrate some of the successes that have occurred in our community recently. Wisconsin Main Street Awards occurred about a week ago, and I want to recognize both the city of Green Bay and selfishly on Broadway for being recognized as the best public-private partnership in the state of Wisconsin. And that was related to a number of projects that had occurred within the Broadway District over the past year or so, and so thank you to the staff, the city of Green Bay, for all of your hard work to help make our city great. Additionally, DDL Holdings was recognized for the best adaptive reuse of a property in the state of Wisconsin, and so when we think about that Larson-Green development and all of the progress that they've made there, I think that was a significant accomplishment for them to be recognized for that effort. So, thank you.
That's great. Thanks, Alder. Report of the Improvement and Services Committee, April 24th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been a motion made by the Alder from the seventh, seconded by the Alder from the first, to approve Report H, which is the report of the Improvement and Services Committee from the meeting on April 24th, 2019. Are there any items under this report you wish to handle separately?
Four.
Item four will be handled separately. Hearing no others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the report has been approved, with the exception of item four. What are your wishes regarding item four?
To approve.
There's been a motion to approve by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the tenth. This item was pulled by the Alder from the ninth. You have the floor.
I would just like to amend the wording. Currently, it states to receive and place and file. I would amend to state to accept the report of award. I think, after consulting with legal, receive and place and file typically refers to dismissing something. We just want to make it clear that the contract was awarded.
Okay. Motion to amend. Motion to amend made by Alder from the tenth, seconded by Alder from the sixth. All in favor of motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Seeing no other requests to speak, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the report has been approved. Report of the Protection and Policy Committee, April 29th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the first, to approve Report I, which is the report of the Protection and Policy Committee from the meeting on April 29th, 2019. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately?
Yes, but I gotta find.
Item twenty-seven will be handled separately. Hearing no others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and that report has been approved, with the exception of item twenty-seven. What are your wishes regarding item twenty-seven, Alder?
Motion to approve.
Been a motion made to approve by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the fourth, to approve. This item was pulled by the Alder from the seventh. You have the floor.
At the committee, the owner for Presidente was not present. He is here now, so I'd like to make a motion to open the floor.
It's been a motion made to open the floor by the Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the tenth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Floor is open.
Please state your name and address, sir. Okay, my name is Jose Alfredo Capi. Okay, I'm just Representative Presidente. The owner is coming, he's running late. We didn't know that the meeting was today, so that's all that I can say right now. My English is not the best, so that's why I think...
Make a motion to the foot of the calendar, or is that something that's on? Entertain a motion to move this item to the foot of the calendar.
So, second.
Moved by Alder from the fourth, seconded by Alder from the second, the seventh, rather. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion made to close the floor by the alderman from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the sixth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The floor is closed. Report of the Protection and Policy Committee granting operator licenses.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the fifth, to approve Report J, which is the report of the Protection and Policy Committee granting operating licenses. Are there any names for which you'd like to be recorded as abstaining? Any names under this report you wish to handle separately? Hearing none. All in favor of the report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the report has been approved. Report of the Planning Commission, May 13th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the sixth, to approve, seconded by Alder from the ninth, to approve Report K, which is the report of the Planning Commission from the meeting on May 13th, 2019. Note that there is a Scrivener's error. That's an old-timey phrase there. On the agenda, the meeting was actually held on April 22nd, 2019, not on May 13th, 2019. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately? Alder from the sixth, like to handle item one separately. Seconded.
Motion to handle separately.
Approved. Handling it separately. Made by Alder from the sixth, seconded by Alder from the tenth. Motion to approve the report made by Alder from the sixth, seconded by Alder from the... Okay. Seconded made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the ninth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
The reason I pulled it is, I just want to explain a little bit about this. I've been working with someone in the law, I forgot the gentleman's name I worked with in the law department, and with the planning commission, I talked a few. I still would like to try to change the ordinance, the wording, that it has to be industrial to have the storage units. This unit was grandfathered in, it's commercial right now. They want to expand, they want to improve it. The neighbors are all for the improvements, the plans that we saw, I mean, it would really look nice. And right now, there's a house on there that they rent out, and they want, they have to fill it, and they want to put two more units in, and as long as they, they're gonna fence it with a real attractive fence, put trees in, they're gonna pave it, there's not paving, it's right now gravel. It would be a big improvement, and I'm trying to find a way that we can make some kind of an exception, because they do not want, they had at the end, because it's commercial, there was a commercial business there, and they don't want anything with commercial, they want just residential storage. They don't want any plumber, you know, putting all his supplies in there, going in and out with his trucks. I'm trying to work something out, so I just want people to be aware right now. You can approve it, I probably will approve what, as it goes right now, but I'm still trying to work on it. I just wanted to let you know what I'm trying to do for the neighborhood. Okay?
Thank you. Any other speakers? Alder from the ninth.
Alder Scanell, or excuse me, sorry, Alder LaFave, just hearing what you've said, I don't know that I would personally support a change to include units under commercial. It sounds to me like what you really want, and correct me if I'm wrong, is approval of the conditional use permit, which was currently being denied, correct?
Yes.
In which case, then I would suggest that either refer it back to staff for additional work, or you could just simply make that, make that motion to get us an up or down vote.
Sure.
I'll entertain a motion.
I guess I'll have to refer it back to staff for my motion.
Second.
Motion made to refer back to staff by Alder from the sixth, seconded by Alder from the first. Yes. Dr. Vonck.
Sure. Just clarification, two things. One, if you want to refer, I'd probably refer back to Plan Commission, and then to, as to Alder Person Johnson, so ultimately, the applicant needs to get a conditional use permit to do the storage units. But before that can be done, the storage units have to be an eligible use or an acceptable use, which means the property has to be zoned industrial. But before we can zone industrial, the comp plan says this area should be commercial, so we need to make an adjustment to the comp plan, saying that this comp plan, future land use for this parcel, for this area, will be industrial. So that was the action, I guess if you're backing up the steps, so the motion or the action from the Plan Commission, the first step, is to adjust, amend the comprehensive plan. So that would be what this is, going back to look at that first step of amending the comprehensive plan.
Zoning. What qualifies under zoning?
Correct. So in order to even be eligible for the CUP, you need the zoning, and even before you start the zoning process, you need the underlying comp plan, so that's where we're starting at.
And we do not want to turn to industrial, light industrial, because we have no guarantee that the present owners will stay there, and then who knows what we could end up in there, because it's, all around there is residential, and the residents do not want it industrial either. So, that's where we're standing, so it's like a standoff, but trying to work something, because I talked to the two gentlemen, and when they were in Minnesota, same type of situation, and they did put a conditional use for them. They allowed them in a residential.
Yeah.
Or commercial, I should say. Thank you.
You have a motion on the floor to refer back to staff. Alder from the first.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just would like a little bit more explanation from Plan, so you, okay, and from Alder LaFave. You don't want it to be industrial. You don't. So to deny the request means... You would want to approve that, then. That's the request to turn it into, from commercial to industrial, and you don't want that. I mean, is this, this is motion... Right, right. I would approve this. You would approve this motion? Yes. But you'd like the whole, maybe you should just write a new communication, then. Maybe I could withdraw my second to the amendment, and if you want to withdraw yours, and maybe just a whole new communication, because it looks like this is exactly what you're saying, but then you want something different. Okay. Does that make sense? Okay, I withdraw my second.
Okay.
Yeah, I withdraw.
Motion's been withdrawn. Motion to approve the report. Right, okay. Motion to approve item one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
No.
The ayes have it. Report has been approved. Item has been approved. Report of the Public Arts Commission, April 24th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Alder from the first, to approve Report L, which is the report of the Public Arts Commission from the meeting on April 24th, 2019. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately?
One.
Item one will be handled separately. Hearing no others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the report has been approved, with the exception of item one. What are your wishes regarding item one? Alder from the seventh makes a motion to approve item one, seconded by Alder from the tenth. Any speakers on this item? Alder from the ninth.
We need some guidelines and direction in terms of how this program would specifically be monitored and managed. Does the work to bring it to the commission.
Motion on the floor to refer back to staff. Made by Alder from the ninth, seconded by Alder from the seventh. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item M, Report of the Traffic Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission, April 15th, 2019. Motion made by Alder from the fifth, seconded by Alder from the seventh, to approve Report M, which is the report of the Traffic Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission from the meeting on April 15th, 2019. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately? Item number one will be handled separately. Hearing no others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This is a trick, wasn't it, Alder? Alder, would you like to speak to item one?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a motion to refer it back. There were members of the Neighborhood Association, a couple of them, who could not make it that night, and I think there was only one person there, and he didn't know he was supposed, he had to really speak on it, so I'm just gonna make this motion to refer it back for further discussion.
Second.
Motion made to refer back to committee, made by Alder from the eighth, seconded by Alder from the seventh. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. N, Report of the Sustainability Commission, April 10th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the first, to approve Report N, which is the report of the Sustainability Commission from the meeting on April 10th, All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Report has been approved. Receive and place on file. What are your wishes regarding this report?
Motion to receive and place on file.
Motion made to receive and place on file by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the tenth, to receive and place on file the building permit report for April 2019. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the report has been received and placed on file. Resolutions. Clerk will read the statement.
You may enter suspension of the rules, adopt resolutions one through four, together with one roll call vote.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the eleventh, to suspend the rules and take up these items with one roll call vote. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the rules are suspended. I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolutions one through four. Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the first, to adopt resolutions one through four. Please use the board. Q, Referral of Petitions and Communications. Alder from the twelfth.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I had placed the communication through to the Protection and Policy Committee. I just want to ensure that it gets put on the agenda for this meeting. It was held a couple times, but I want to read it for the public record, and if it could be on the next agenda, I would appreciate it. I talked to the clerk, and she still has this communication, but I still want to read it. "For the city to develop a resolution or policy and procedure to notify property owners near parcels of land with a pending or approved application to be transferred from fee-to-trust status, my overarching concern is for the city and the Oneida Nation in goodwill to notify affected property owners of the new governing jurisdiction, code enforcement, and zoning authority of the parcel recently transferred or applied to be transferred, and to provide an official forum for public input and comment." Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Any other communications? Alder from the second.
This is for Traffic Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission. Requested study, request for study to paint solid yellow line, no passing lines, down a center of road, and add a pedestrian bike lane to help curb the speeding issues on Ontario, and then also a study to be done to determine if a stop sign should be installed on Ontario at either Windland or East Breeze to help speeding issues.
Thank you, Alder. Clerk, do you have any late communications?
I do not.
Alder from the sixth.
Okay, I got a request to, and I want to, you prefer it to the staff, or should I do it to the Planning Commission? My request on the storage unit, what would be the best?
Dr. Vonck.
Sure, I would put it to Plan Commission, and Plan Commission can discuss and decide whether they want to refer to staff or not.
Thank you.
To the Plan Commission. My request is, I would like to look, having the look again for the property at 1725 North Irwin Avenue, storage units request, looking for an except, exception to allow the expansion on the property in a commercial district. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Any late communications?
I do not.
I'll entertain a motion to refer all petitions and communications. Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the fifth, to refer all late petitions and communications to the proper authority. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and those petitions and communications have been referred. R, Committee of the Whole. Before us is an update with possible action on purchase of real property. This is for you to read, Chris. Or should I read it? At 227 North Quincy Street, 221 North Quincy Street, 624-626 Pine Street, 618 Pine Street, 616 Pine Street, and 605 Cherry Street, tax parcels 11-156, 11-157, 11-158, 11-159, 11-160, and 11-191. This item, as I said, is on the agenda for an update. We'll hear from Development Director Vonck first, and if you have any questions or would like to discuss matters pertaining to competitive or bargaining purposes, we can move into closed session at that time. Director Vonck.
Thank you, Mayor. So this, what we're talking about is the Associated Bank parking lot. Came to council in December of 2018, looking to exercise an option to purchase that the city had with Associated, going back to our development agreement in 2012. We were at a point where we were looking to gain site control of the property, and really, just based on timing, the only way that we were able to do that was to exercise that option to purchase and move forward with the purchase. We discussed this in closed session, and staff was given some direction as far as how to proceed. We discussed this also at RDA today. In short, we have an executed purchase and sale agreement to purchase the property for $1.2 million, with a closing date to be done as soon as possible. I think one of the things that we had discussed is, you know, trying to work out some type of deal with the county in terms of being able to provide parking that would accommodate their needs. I think with the transition, the new mayor has reached out to the county executive, had some further discussion. Attorney Chavez has reached out to Corporation Council Henry, additional discussions about, you know, the logistics and mechanics of doing so. You know, with that, as far as the city moving ahead with that option to purchase, we are pretty much locked in to do that, unless the council would like to discuss and debate taking a different direction, but I think, given advice from the RDA and the initial conversation that we had, the objective would be to move forward with that purchase. But with that, we would follow up and continue those conversations with the county to look at working out potentially some type of parking agreement. I think in discussions with Public Works, you know, looking at what our market rate is for surface lot parking, we'd be able to park this lot. There's 319 spaces that would definitely park it in a way that would take care of our debt service and provide some additional funds for maintenance of this facility. Again, though, I think our objective in purchasing it was pretty clear that this is a short-term parking solution, but a long-term development opportunity. I think when we talked about this, it's not often you're able to gain control of a full city block in the downtown area, and in terms of securing both private or potentially public development interests, it was in our best interest to pursue. So with that, that is the update. We've had some conversations with the bank last week, and I think they are ready to close on the property, but again, wanted, request of the mayor to provide an update of where we're at. Again, as the mayor said, if there's anything in terms of further negotiations that you wanted to discuss, I mean, there's closed session language available on here, but otherwise, our intent is to move forward with the closure of the property. But otherwise, our intent is to move forward with the closure of the property.
Thank you, Director. Any further comments? Yeah, Alder from the eleventh.
This is for Dr. Vaughn. Will this property cash flow out as far as the parking? Is that strictly what, what's going to be the vehicle to pay the debt service? And where's the money coming from?
Sure. So, we have not had to draw the funds yet, and that is with some further discussion with our finance director in terms of what we'll actually have to borrow for versus what we might have available for cash on hand. With that, if you look at the 319 spaces, you look and I'll look at Director Gner, I think our market rate, current market rate for city surface lots is somewhere between $35 and $40 a month. With that, we would need to rent out between 213 and 244 spaces in order to make that cash flow and pay the debt service. Based on our conversations, whether with the county, or there's actually some private entities who are interested in leasing spaces there, we feel we'd be able to more than fulfill that number and provide for the cash flow on that. I think that was one of the things that, you know, it's important when we look at acquiring property, you know, both the short-term and long-term goals. Strategically, this is a long-term win for the city in terms of the development along that corridor. But also, we're not in the long-term business of holding properties, so how do we maintain it in the short term? And we believe, in discussion with their development team, that we would have sufficient revenues to cover that debt service.
Okay, on the, are we looking to borrow the whole amount? Are we looking to borrow the whole amount?
Potentially, I guess maybe I'll defer to our finance director. We have not had to pull it yet, but that'd be one of the things, again, trying to work with Associated in terms of where that may be. I know she's been working on cash flows for this year, so I guess I would defer to her in terms of when that borrowing might occur.
Together, we have to still come up with a plan, but it could be various sources. It could be either TIP funding, it could be, you know, I'm still talking about working with the parking division. We also could float the money for a few months, and then as we borrow for the 2019 bonding, that could be part of the bonding request for 2019. So, it hasn't been, we weren't sure if this agreement was going to go all the way through, so we have not gone through all the steps of deciding what kind of borrowing we would move forward with.
If we, let's just say we borrow a million dollars, we'd be, we'd be looking at probably about $42,000 a year on interest. Is that correct? From what we borrowed from the last, the last, I think we borrowed for the baby street, we've got that 4.25% with the interest. So, we'd be looking at about, right around 40, maybe 42,000 per million to do that.
Yeah, roughly. So, we ran our calcs at a $1.2 million loan at four and three-quarters interest, and we did that over 20 years. And roughly, that came out then to an annual payment of just over $102,000. And then just based on, again, the rates that we discussed in terms of what was needed to cash flow. There's 319 spaces there, if we get between the $35 and $40 range per month, you're looking at around between 210, 240 spaces that need to be leased.
We're not looking for a long-term commitment as far as parking, we're looking for more development down the road.
Yeah, I think, you know, the initial agreement, look, we probably wouldn't look longer than a year with options to renew for a year, or a period of, if a developer would come in, you know, a 90-day termination period, that we'd be able to move quickly onto that. And I think we've been upfront with those who have been interested in leasing the spaces, that they understand that's what they're getting into.
That's, that answers my question, then, thank you very much. Thank you.
Alder from the tenth.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm encouraged by the discussions between the mayor and the county exec on this. I think it is a viable piece of property. I think that we're doing due diligence on this, and like, I'm happy with how that's going. So, I would say continue on this tack. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder from the seventh.
Thank you, Your Honor, I just have one question, and I don't recall us discussing this in the past, and if we have, please forgive my memory and refresh it. But, part of the equation, the plan, the, for filling the lot and paying for the lot, has to do with the county, and that parking is already downtown, though, so are we, in some sense, robbing Peter to pay Paul? Has it been factored in what this does to the other ramps and everything? How are we expecting to fill those back up? So, it's not a, not a problem, okay? Thank you.
Any further discussion? An appropriate motion would be to accept the update from the Development Director. Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the fifth, to accept the update from the Development Director. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the motion has been approved. We still have item 27 from the report of the Protection and Policy Committee. Motion made by Alder from the eighth, seconded by... Just one second. Attorney Chavez?
So, the problem running into is that the recommendation to non-renew is time-sensitive. With that, the non-renewal, we are obligated to provide an opportunity. They have 10 days after we, after, we have to submit notice to them, and they have 10 days after that to request a full-on evidentiary hearing. So, if the person is unable to make it tonight, they're, they are still able to ask for a hearing to appear before this committee, or before this council. Correct.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, to deny, seconded by Alder from the eighth. All in favor of said motion, signify by saying aye. Alder from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to set a precedent. When we have public meetings, we have agenda items, and we expect the public to be here. But, on this situation, if the gentleman's on his way, and this is sort of his livelihood, I know he has an additional appeal process, but we could just hold for five minutes, just out of respect to this person. We don't know the situation he was facing.
Set a motion?
Motion to recess for five minutes. I mean, unless, can, can you ask the gentleman if he's literally on the way here?
Seconded by Alder from the first. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. We're in recess for five minutes. And we are back. Motion made by Alder from the first, seconded by Alder from the fifth, to return to the business of the council. Entert, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Entertained a motion to open the floor. Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the tenth, to open the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The floor is open. Sir, if you could just state your name and address?
And, I just was notified because there was some person that went to the restaurant and notified us that there was this going on. I really need to know the reason, the real reason why they will take the license away from us. We were trying, we had a company working for us, there was Dublin Entertainment. They did a complete mess of the place, to be honest. When we took them out, we would be really doing a lot of work in that place, trying to save the place, to be honest, because of the financial situation of the place is really bad. And, that's why the decision of keeping the bar open, the upper part. My goal is to actually be able to just have the restaurant, because it's more viable for me, too, because I don't, I cannot be traveling back and forth all the time. And, I don't see a point that, I, I think that we were doing a good job. That company wasn't, honestly, they were doing, I didn't know nothing about that type of businesses, I'm more into restaurant industry than... And I didn't, I, I thought to get someone that actually knew about it, it would help me. Well, guess it didn't, because they took advantage of the place. And it was really hard for me to get rid of them, like, really hard, because they made me sign contracts at the beginning, right? And, even like that, there was one point that I couldn't. Like, I was working with the police, too, and trying to figure out how, with the different type of police that they are, because there's the, the other type, the, what are they coming, I don't remember the name of that, that take care of the licensing, too. And they tell me they will help me and try to guide me, most of all, because I don't have experience in this department. But I think we were doing a lot of improvement. I have machines checking IDs, too, there, I have too many things, cameras and setup. I've been trying to work the most that I can, the fastest that I can with the budget that we have, right? And, I think that we're doing a lot of improvement. We're getting to a point, I don't understand this, because I did all the process, apparently no one, no one told me nothing until, until today. And I'm like, I was, I was like, wow, what's going on? Why, why you didn't know about this? And, basically, I want to know what are the points, or why is they considering, like, not renewing the liquor license? Because I've been trying to cooperate with every authority that I can, and trying to see, learn of my mistakes, try to make things better. And I don't think that we have any problem. There's some issues that happen in the parking lot in front, but that's out of my jurisdiction, because that's totally away. We cannot get involved sometimes, because I could get sued, too, if, if, it gets to a point that, I don't know what to do, right? But that situation is out of the place. I don't know if that involves us directly, because I don't even know if there were customers, probably one of those, there could be customers, but you don't ever know, because our, every bar goes out. So, it's difficult to know that it's actually been from us, we have several bars on our sides, too. So, it's hard, because that's a, they, when that happened, it's outside, way, way outside of us, not even close to us, so... I want some, certain, I'm sorry that I'm not here, and I couldn't hear what all the other people should say about it. But I'm here, if I, someone can tell me what's...
Chief Smith?
Sir, I have to respectfully disagree that the place is being well-run. My officers spend an inordinate amount of time in the evenings at El Presidente. Time and time again, we have meetings on Monday where we talk about the issues that were not outside the bar, but inside of the bar. Fights, arrests for underage drinking. Recently, the alcohol, tobacco, and firearms confiscated several thousand dollars' worth of alcohol that was being sold illegally inside of there.
Recently?
Yes. The neighbors have complained about noise that goes on way beyond the acceptable hours. The neighbors have also complained about the fights that spill outside of the parking lot. I've been there a couple times myself, and seen the crowds that are coming out of there, and the fights that are occurring as people are leaving, because their level of intoxication. Are you aware that some of your neighboring businesses have actually focused their cameras on your business, instead of their business? Because the problems in the front of that place are coming from El Presidente. Over and over and over again, my officers have been there to try and explain what you need to do to clean that business up, over and over and over again, and it has not happened. Were you not into the police station and talked to the officers? Were you not invited to come down to the police station? Did they not explain to you several months ago what the issues were and why they were not getting resolved?
What I asked them is, like, to help me out, right? They talk even with the owner of the building, because the owner of the building, they don't know about the meeting either. So, I'm like, we talk directly, after that, we never talk about any other situation, because there was not really any other situation in there. I don't know if it was directly with us, sorry. But, it's just that, I have seen the place so different than it was when these people were running the place. And the fights had lowered. I'm not saying that there's not little altercation with people, we try to separate them, take one out and hold the other one inside, just in case so they can cool down, and then we take the other one out, too. The problem is, we don't know if that people wait outside, or, or get to a point that it's out of our own control, that I cannot handle that, that part. What happens when they, when we close, and they, they just meet with the other guys outside, or something like that. And, even like that, when there was a fight in the parking lot, even my staff and I directly went, I was involved in, went directly to stop them. And we stopped them before the, something bigger, it were, were going to commence.
Right. But so, to summarize, underage drinking, selling of illegal liquor, open way beyond the hours that you're permitted to be open.
Sorry for interrupting you, but that happened last year, no?
I'm not sure the exact date that happened.
Just a point of order. Don't want the back and forth, just an explanation from...
So, underage drinking, as I mentioned, the fights, the failure to cooperate with the officers after coming over there. You're using an inordinate amount of police resources in a city that's already strapped for the number of police. You have to spend a lot of time down at El Presidente, because it's not being run right.
But instead of taking my liquor license, why you guys don't help me, like, to handle it?
Well, technically, we're not taking the liquor license, the thing here is not to renew the liquor license that you have, because you have not demonstrated that you're a responsible business owner when it comes to having a liquor license.
Alder, or Attorney Chavez, could you just explain some of the process here a little bit?
Yes, sir. So, there, what happens today is, this is just a recommendation for non-renewal. After this, the, the, the owner of the establishment will receive a notice of the intent to non-renew, and has 10 days to request an evidentiary hearing. Again, this is just a recommendation based on preliminary evidence. The full evidentiary hearing is when actual testimony can be provided, and, and the discourse should happen. Lot Department has reviewed this and also recommends non-renewal. The reason being is that the, the number of citations that have been issued at this location are substantially higher than many other establishments within the city. I think this is probably the biggest problem for the city so far. The, the problem that we have is that the citations continue. So, most recently, there have been judgments against Mr. LaPorte regarding disorderly house from June, allowing underage to enter licensed premise also in June, on a different date, having a disorderly house in September. And then, most recently, in January, licensed premises open after hours. There have been instances where the property has had large fights occurring outside. There have been instances where, with just what has been happening with the police department, they, they are, they're noting in their, their reports that they've had crowds of up to, like, 50 people gathering outside, watching fights. And so, they've had, again, disturbances that are being referred to the DA, there have been minors being served, they've had minors served, taken into possession, into custody, and then they've been found have, being in possession of cocaine. There's been written, written warnings for maintaining a public nuisance. There's just been a lot of instances where there's, there's problems. And so, because it is ongoing, and there doesn't seem to be any rectification, both the Lot Department and the PD have recommended non-renewal at this point.
Can I, can, sorry, can I?
You can hear from me, yes.
Yes, sir.
In my behalf, to talk, if you see all the citations and everything, was when this company was running, again. This company got fired at the end of September. After that, the only ticket that they had gave me was because someone left the door open. I was taking the people out, there was a, I'm not going to say if a confusion or not, because if you see the timing that the ticket was given, I didn't want to contest it anymore, because I was tired of contesting the other citations that I had, I wasted a lot in lawyers already, money that I don't have, so... That citation they gave it to me at 2:32, I believe, 2:32 it was. That was when we were kept inside of the premises, myself, too, against my will, for 30 minutes, and they did criminal checks in everybody that was in the place, all my employees and everything. After that, they released us for, to leave. I didn't say nothing about it, because I didn't want any, any more problems, okay? I went to work, yeah, okay, let's, let's keep going, and I don't say nothing, whatever. I didn't say that was appropriate, the way that they handled it, to be honest, and I was not open to public, the lights were open already, we were... already, we were cleaning. But, that was ticket because the door was open downstairs, and supposedly it was open. You know, they even had customers that were in the back, they, they pulled them back inside, and they did the same thing to the, the criminal record to them. And, and people were scared, like, why are they doing, why? Because they took our licenses, they let them do their job, and we keep moving. And, well, they issued me a ticket, because I couldn't be, like, open, and, but, if you see that ticket was created in two-thirty-three houses there, because they did, they did all this checkup and all that, but it's okay. That's the only issue. I'm not going to say nothing about the, the, the problem, the little problems, because we were trying to handle it as we can. In the inside, I have cameras. They, the police has all the right to review the cameras that I have, when they request it. And issues, like big issues, believe me, when, when these people had the restaurant, this Dubai, not the restaurant, the, the bar part of the restaurant, because the restaurant doesn't give you, doesn't give us any problem whatsoever. So, it's safe all, all the time, there's nothing going on. And if you see the hours where this happened, this is the, the Saturday. I decided to shut down Fridays, and just keep one day so I can focus on it one day, if, if it was actually viable to keep this. If not, like, to shut down the bar. That, that was my idea, right? But, it's really hard to run a business in downtown. When you have parking space, there's not a lot of business, to be honest. So, basically, in order for me to keep the restaurant alive, I needed the income from the upper part. So, shutting down the upper part was, it was going to hit me, like, really strong in the finances, in the, in the, in the bottom part, and probably shut down. I'm not sure if I can keep it or not. I need to, again, run numbers and see if I can do something about it. I know that I don't have the experience of the world to run the, the bar, but I tried to make a lot, a lot of improvement. I, I have seen, and if you compare those, if you see those tickets when they were issued, that was a real issue. There was a real problem going on, and I'm trying, as much as I can to, I mean, try to, see, I'm, I'm not from Green Bay, so I don't know a lot of people, and I, I need to start learning the people. That's why I go every Saturday, so I can know, okay, this one is this, I, I, so I can start knowing them. And, and they'll, they respect more the place, too, when they don't know the place, and they feel more comfortable in the place. Has always been my idea, if I cannot lower it to zero, it's better shut down the bar. I understand that. I'm a business, I, I'm in business, too, and I know there's usually need to be taken sometimes, and if it doesn't work well, shut down the restaurant or something, or something like that. But, it's hard in the economy of someone, because we depend on that economy, you know? And I don't know what else can I say, but I disagree in the timeframe that it happened. I can see a lot of improvement when you receive tickets and fights every, every night, to lower, to almost lower the amount the more possible that I was able to in this timeframe. This last, I don't know what the experience that you have with that company, with the Bling? Have you heard about them? Because they're like, they go into each business, and it started like, and I didn't know about that, and that affected me. And I let myself guide through them, because supposedly they had the experience running a place like that. But, they didn't. And now, I'm paying for all their mistakes. I'm paying now, now in this, in this process, or this time. I'm still fighting for the mistakes of them. I try to fix everything, but it keeps popping out. And...
Thank you for your public testimony. Appreciate that. I'll entertain a motion. Motion, return to regular. Oh, questions for... Alder from the 1st?
Are you saying that the majority of these things happened when you were not the owner of this?
No, no. I was, I was, I was, I was like a party shooter, too. But, I was not a responsible party. So, when, when, when we took the, the other party was starting to get out of the picture, because they couldn't handle the business. When I got in, I inherited a, a bunch of problems, like financial problems from the place.
Okay, but, no, let me just narrow the question down. When the interactions with the police department took place, were you responsible for this business?
I was responsible, but I hired a company to run the...
Got it. And the company you hired was not doing a good job, but you still were the responsible person. That's the clarification I needed. Thank you.
Alder from the 4th?
Thank you, Your Honor. Sir, so, you don't own the building?
The building, no.
You own the business?
Yeah.
And how long have you owned this business?
Okay, when we start, I started investing in the place with another person. They actually had another...
Okay, so how long have you owned the business?
Like, two years.
Two years. And how long has Bling been operating?
The Bling? The Bling operated, it started, okay, when I took over, because I went, I wasn't taking any measurement. I was a silent partner in that equation. I took it in March last year. That's when I took it, and I hired this company, because I didn't know how to run the, the, the upper part of the bar, of the restaurant. So, I'm like, I hired this company to run that, and then to the decisions. The problem is, I wasn't here. And that's what the police officers told me all the time, said, "You need to be here." They called me, "You need to be here," and...
So, for seven months, Bling ran the operation, and then you took over in September?
And then it was, it was like, sorry, my October.
Okay. And so, you did know stuff was going on, because the officers got ahold of you, and they told you you need to be there.
And I keep approaching, they keep telling me, telling me, that it was nice, and, and everything.
Thank you. And then, fights, underage drinking, disorderly house, for those of you in council don't know, disorderly house means that it is such a large disturbance that the police department is forced to shut the entire business down at that moment. Okay? And that's, more than once did that happen there. And since then, it sounds like there's been other problems with alcohol consumption. And Wisconsin has a, a culture of drinking, but you're responsible when those people are served so much alcohol that they're engaging in fights and altercations with other patrons and people outside. That's your responsibility. You can't say and wash your hands at the door as they walk out and start starting problems. That's your responsibility. If you're over-serving them, that's your responsibility.
Yeah, what the police say is, whatever is in front, you can actually act. If they get out of your jurisdiction, it's hard, like, if you touch someone, because you will get involved in a...
You're still the one that fed them the booze in the establishment. You, you gave it to them. You sold it to them. You made a profit. That's your responsibility. And what they do outside that bar, and there are statutes in the state of Wisconsin holding you responsible to how much you serve people. And if you don't have your staff trained and have policies in place that control that, that's still your responsibility. Just like if you have a party at your house, and guests come over to your house, and they go outside and start problems, it's your responsibility. And, and this is our community, and we care about it. And that's why we're taking the action we're taking tonight. But, you're saying it's not really your, your fault that this Bling company ran and had all these problems. But, when does it become your responsibility?
No, it is my responsibility. I'm not saying it's not my responsibility. My responsibility to hire them, the same thing, I got rid of them, because I needed to take them out of here.
All right.
You know, I do accept that it's not my responsibility. I'm not, I'm not saying it's not, I'm not responsible, because being the owner of the place makes you responsible. And I need to take actions. In this case, what I'm asking is, if I need to take an action of closing the bar, I can take that action. It's not like, I, I, I always tell the officers, if one point, just let me know if it's getting out of control, I would stay rid of the bar.
That's not the officer's responsibility to show up on your door and tell you it's time to close it down, or tell you how to manage your business. If I could ask a, a question of Attorney Chavez, how, how many citations do you know have been issued since September?
Oh, I don't have them broken down by, by date, but I can tell you that I have at least a disorderly house in September, and a licensed premise is open, open after hours in January. And I believe there was one after that, but I don't recall what it was. I think one recently, like, in April.
All right.
And that was when they were explaining about the, the timing of the bar.
And I'll tell you, my experience has been that when we have problem bars, you need to look at the management, and the management either cleans it up, or it doesn't. The city's saying you shouldn't have your licenses renewed. You've used up your chances to start operating this, this business. And I'm, I'm afraid, sir, I'm, I'm going to support that at this point.
Even though if I shut the, the upper part?
You know, if, if you want to come back and, and, and try and reopen your business as a different kind of business, as a restaurant only, certainly I would look at that. But, we've had this problem before, where we've had businesses in this community that have operated as quasi-restaurants, bars, and there's always this balance of how much do they have to have in food sales, how much do they have to have in liquor sales, and it has always bit this community in the butt. And we've ended up, time and time again, eventually shutting these places down after repeated police calls, community complaints, people being injured, things like that. And it never works when they try to operate a bar, restaurant. Either it has to be run as a restaurant and no bar. And, I mean, if, I don't know if that's possible.
Why do you bring you to, to you guys, that I only operate during the hours of a restaurant, that it should be only restaurant?
That's something you can appeal at this point, but we're not open at this point to be negotiating. This is something that should have been done at the protection and policy level. And, and I'm not sure why you weren't there, or why you weren't aware of it, because it certainly sounds like you've been in charge since September. Sounds like you've been getting notified by the police since September. So, why you weren't aware of this, I'm not sure. But, that's something you should look into, and if, if that's grounds for appeal, I encourage you to appeal. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion. Motion to close the floor, made by Alder from the 7th, seconded by Alder from the 5th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The ayes have it? Alder from the 7th?
Yes, and it's not only the police and legal are concerned. Many of the businesses I've heard from along there are very concerned. And I, I would recommend that the owner, he's got his time to appeal, get a lawyer, appeal, talk to staff, and get his ducks in a roll, and follow through that process, and we can see what can be done. I don't know what can be done. We could take a look at it. But, for now, I certainly support the denial. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Entertained a motion on item twenty-seven? Motion made. Motion made by Alder from the 7th, seconded by Alder from the 10th to approve the non-renewal of the license. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The ayes have it? Motion to adjourn, made by Alder from the 7th. Seconded by Alder from the 10th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? We are adjourned.